I call the order of the Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, January 19th at 7:00 PM. To please rise up and call the order, I should say, and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the public who participates, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call to establish a quorum, please.
Supervisor Richard Weidman.
Here.
Supervisor Chuck Tice.
Here.
Vice Chairman Dan Wolffel.
Here.
And Supervisor John Stavinas.
Here.
And Leo's excused for this meeting. All right. Next item on our agenda is the meet and greet and public participation. So why don't we just start with Linda? Introduce yourself if you would as we go around the room. Linda?
Linda Wade, Clerk Treasurer for the Town of Sebastopol. My address is 5075 Block Court.
Dick Weidman, Board Supervisor, 4108 South Country View Road.
Chuck Tice, Supervisor, Livon Bay Shore Drive, 4771.
Supervisor Dan Wolffel, Livon Bark Road.
John Stavinas, live at 3811 Whitefish Bay Road.
If you introduce yourself, miss.
I'm Jackie Sawyer, live at 5218 Castro, in Cameron.
Jackie Sawyer, same address. You? Yes, I'm here. Daryl Von Berg, Goodenred.
28 Matthew Road.
Mary Ellen Dean, Matthew Road.
Name is Nick Wellborn, through Mutual Insurance, and I live in County Nassauapi, on Cameron Street.
Nick, you're the fellow that'll be taking over for Mr. Harold.
Yep, I'm taking over for Del.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming this afternoon, evening. Let's go to the evening, be a lot better than... Okay. Anybody? Mr. John. I'm sorry, Miss Laddie.
Hi, Laddie Johnson, living drive.
That was close. All right. Is there anyone that'd like to have any public participation before we get into the meat of the meeting? No comments on anything? Okay. Hearing none. Let's talk about the agenda. Linda, has the agenda been properly noted?
It has been.
All right. And we approve the agenda as printed. Second. All right. Oh, go ahead.
Would you like me to introduce myself a little bit more during the meet and greet and public participation part?
Well, actually, that's where we were.
I know. I didn't realize it at first, that I was looking through the agenda and realized there might not be another spot for me to just introduce myself, give a little background. If you guys are interested.
Well, let me just finish up on the adoption of the agenda, and we'll back up for just a minute there. Okay? So we have a motion by Chuck, a second by Dick, to accept the... Excuse me, to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None asked? All right. Let's just back up for a minute, please. Since you did come to the meeting for that purpose, wanted to just give us a little bit of background on yourself and what the transition will be with rural insurance, correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Nick Wellborn. I've been working with Del for about four and a half, five years. I was assistant for two years, then on my own. He is now transitioning into retirement, so I'll be taking over the duties. And don't worry, I've been... My hand's been in it the entire time. I've spoke with Linda numerous times, you know, helping out. Since Del's just kind of transitioning to retirement, he's still able to help me and come in if there's any questions. I still use him as a resource. I grew up on the Little Sturgeon area. I graduated 2004 from Southern Door. And that's about it. Unless you guys have any other questions?
How long do you think Del will be around?
Forever. He's actually Max's father-in-law, so I know where he lives. If you called him, go there whenever. Unless he changes his cell phone number or his house number, he's pretty much stuck with me. And he knows it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the minutes. Approval of minutes from the Supervisors meeting on December 15th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December 15th.
Second. Motion by John, second by Chuck. Any comments, changes, anything? If not, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nah. Carried? All right. Financial reports for the month of December. Any questions, comments? Maybe I should start with Linda, in case there's anything on there that you'd like to explain or go into any detail on, Linda?
Well, obviously, our bank balances as of December 31st, 2014 are quite healthy because we have 2014 real estate taxes deposited, and those were not dispersed until January 15th. We also have the budget versus actual, January through December 2014. Those numbers may change a bit as we receive additional room tax. I'm waiting for the December 31st billing from Door County Highway Department, which will probably have some snow plowing on it. Other than that, everything is pretty self-explanatory.
You should mention that I signed a lot of checks for close to a million dollars, so we've managed to deplete a fair amount of money just last week, or in the last week. But it's not something you do every day, sign checks for that. All right. Anybody else have any comments?
As it stands right now, are we roughly $2,200 over on this snow plowing budget?
I thought we were under.
This is on page two, about the eighth line.
Right. If you look on page two of the budget versus actual, about one-third up from the bottom. Snow removal, $87,503 is our actual number. We have budgeted $90,000, so I expect we're going to be very, very close to that 97... Or 90,000.
We're in a fair amount of snow in December, so...
We'll be pretty close.
Can we consider...
Unlike last year.
Considering we used to budget $40,000 to $45,000, so we exceeded that significantly. Okay. Hearing any other comments unless... John, did you say you had something? Question on something? No? Okay. If not, we'll put these documents on file. Next item is oral committee reports and committee minutes. In your packet, the only committee minutes that we have are from the Tourism Zone Commission, and those were from the November 20th meeting in Egg Harbor. Does anyone have any verbal reports that they would like to make?
The Door County Tourism Zone Commission, at one of our previous meetings, decided to change the logo and the top. I can pass this around so people can see, but the top picture was the original logo we had chose when we started the organization. The one on the bottom is the one we will be using now and into the future. So if people would like to... Other than that, everything is going good with the tourism zone. The numbers for November are up about 2.5 percent. One more month before we get into the December numbers. But all in all, tourism has been up over the year. Looks like it might roll in there at about a 3 percent increase over last year.
Any other comments?
The other committee?
Any other comments?
The cable committee met, and I think we'll discuss that item under pending business.
Right.
Item D? Yeah.
Okay. We'll talk about that then. And we'll take these...
If anybody wants to be on the plan commission, we're still short three people. And if one of the members cannot show up, we cannot have a meeting because we need the quorum. First, we have seven members, and we're short three, so if anybody wants to volunteer, please come forward.
I'll be running an ad in the cable station.
Okay.
Again and again, the cable station.
Okay. We'll take the minutes, and we'll put them on file. Next item of business will be licenses and permits. You have a copy of that in your packet. As you can see, it was an extremely busy month for new building permits. I think one. It's a pretty quiet, pretty quiet month.
Do you need a building permit for the premises?
I believe that this is if it's a new furnace, if a replacement. I'm not positive, but I think that's the case.
Okay. This is something I haven't seen before.
They might be changing the service, you know? It might have been a service upgrade or something, too.
You see, there's a separate item underneath new construction, but generally, I haven't noticed it myself under the other. Limited activity in that regard. Okay. Under pending business, we... This is a carryover item from last month. We talked about street lighting. And we had Linda do a little homework on that, and so I asked her to maybe fill in the details, if you don't mind, Linda?
I really don't have anything new to report from last month. I did include in your packets estimates and actuals what we're paying right now. Jason Berry from Sturgeon Bay Utilities did come and pick up the two lighting fixtures that I had on display here last month. But he has not given me any locations in Sturgeon Bay where the board could actually see a sample of the LED lighting, but I found one. It's on the corner of Texas Street and maybe like 10th Avenue or so, right off of Memorial Drive. And it does make the intersection brighter. So perhaps, you'll notice in the bills where we did pay for the replacement of an electric eye and a bulb, though that was only like $8 or whatever. Perhaps the next time one of our fixtures falls apart or falls off or is damaged, we might want to try one of these LEDs. Obviously, it costs more, you know, $235 to $250 or so, but maybe the next time one of our Sturgeon Bay Utility fixtures needs replacement, we could try the LED and see what the cost is compared to our high sodium, high-pressure sodium bulbs.
I think that makes sense. I think you did actually find some information out, though, regarding WPS, did you not?
Oh, yes. WPS, they do not charge us when a bulb burns out in one of their WPS fixtures, which we do have 27 of those. We have 27 WPS fixtures and nine Sturgeon Bay Utility fixtures. WPS does not charge us when they replace a bulb or do any maintenance. And I talked to one of the representatives there. She said they are not contemplating replacing any of their fixtures at this point.
Those actually belong to WPS?
Correct.
Okay.
Which kind of surprised me. You'd think they'd be interested, since they do have everything going to try and reduce the amount of... Whatever, it doesn't always make sense. Any rate.
Well, if they belong to them, are they interested in upgrading their fixtures? No. I don't know.
It's not our problem.
Well, I know, but...
If they... We play a five feet.
Regardless.
Right here.
All right. Then what I think I'll do here, because I actually should have moved it up earlier, we have the Sawyers here regarding a petition for grant of variance, so I think what I'll do, the one is the problem is we'll move them up as the next item, so they don't have to sit through all of this fun. And you know they're looking forward to that. And what I'd like to do is to turn that portion of the meeting over to John, who would normally do that through the planning committee, so... John, you want to take us through that?
Ah, yes, they... John and Jackie Sawyer are here tonight, and they have a cottage on... Where is it? 5346 West Shore Drive. And the committee... Or not the committee, but the zoning regulation says that they got to have 20,000 square feet and 100 feet wide. And their property is 50.4 feet wide, and they have 7,800 square feet to build on. And somehow there was... John can talk a little later, but somehow there was three lots together, and then two got sold off, right? Prior to you. So I guess... Would you want to say anything right now to show exactly? I'm not exactly sure how this is going to lay out, but you're going to go behind and like on that back corner?
Yeah, maybe I'll give the chronology with the going on, but interestingly, the cottage was built in 1925, so it's been there, a 50-foot lot, ever since then. And what had happened, so if you look at the chronology, prior to 1968 zoning, Gordy Schumacher bought the cottage, and he owned about 50 feet of the cottage, so it was a 50-foot lot. He then bought the 100-foot lot right to the south, which they joined them with the intention that he came to the town and tried to have it divided to get two 75-foot blocks. So he looked at it as a moneymaker for him, where he bought the cottage for 50 feet, bought the 100-foot lot next door, and then he joined them, so he had 150 feet. And then he came into town and said, "I'd like to get a variance to create two 75-foot lots." It was denied. And then, so what happened is Gordy sold the 150 feet to John Seiler. So this cottage, John Seiler's for a year or two or whatever. So then John sold the cottage to my mom and dad, Jackie and I, and he sold the 50 feet, and then he retained 100 feet next to us, and then he built the cottage. So the cottage since 1983, since we owned it, we went with minimal improvements, so like lay a foundation under 20 foot, we drilled well so the ailers and the other people, our neighbors, could use, you know, get water and everything. So then finding out when I put in petition to put an addition on it, because the cottage is on the county by 30, you know, the lower level, and upstairs it's 20 by 20, so we're looking to put an addition on the back, give a nice-sized kitchen, right now we're doing like a small kitchen in there, sort of kitchenette, if you want to call it. And so when we petitioned, we were told by the county that we were not allowed to build because the lot was made or created after 1968. So by going through all the chronology, it was a lot for 50 years, and then Gordy Schumacher combined to try to get two lots, and then when he sold it all to John Seiler, John legally, which was fine, he sold, or he kept 100, so less than 50, but there was nothing to tell us that there was anything wrong with that. So now that we petitioned for a building permit, which I assume was over the color, at that time Kate Miller was still there, said, "Oh, boy, we got an issue because this is created after." So she said, "You're going to have to go through a variance." So that's how we ended up here right now. So the lot always was a 50-foot lot, so for like two years until Gordy tried to join them and divide them, it was probably certainly done. So what we're proposing to do, and again, I think I mentioned in the letter, that almost all of them, six lots all to the north are all 50-foot lots.
Right.
And then the lot next to us, which was John Seiler's, which, you know, we've been there for quite a few years, and Eugene Aylers and, you know, Lace are right next to us, and right next to us on the other side, the 100-foot lot is the Carries. We let them use our cottage when their family comes up, so everybody gets along quite well there. So what we're proposing to do is we want to open it up, we want to use it more for our family, because we're starting to have grandparents. So we're trying to use, just put a kitchen dining area off the back, and then with one bedroom pop, so we get, you know, a little more space, you know, for the kids and everybody. And that's what we're kind of looking to do.
Okay. So if you go off the back, are you... You're moving your footprint closer to the lake? Is that what you mean by back?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
The house...
The cottage is right here.
Towards the...
No.
Towards the road?
Away, yeah, towards the road.
Okay. All right. Are you taking the front part of the cottage down, then?
No.
That's not within the building zone?
Yeah. So the cottage will stay as it is. You know, we have a little kitchenette that I come up, and then, yeah, it's not always going to change.
Does that dash line represent a footprint of the new addition?
That's what I didn't see that.
No, the dash line is a buildable area, so I'll give you...
So you're not going over the top here, is that...
No. Actually, right now, the septic is a metal tank, and we're going to take that out. We're going to put a concrete tank there, so if we get to do this, we're going to have a better situation there as well, so...
Let's only approve the holding tank.
Correct. Yeah. So what you were just pointing out...
Oh, that's what's up there.
Yeah. So there, it's this... This is the buildable area, so you're just putting it out right there. Okay, so thank you.
Can I see that, John?
Sure.
Sorry.
So the cottage is... So we're just going to get that a little bit on.
And that's all? This is the setback from the high water?
Yeah.
This is all the side setbacks?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's it. And that's... Okay. With talking with our other board member that is in the audience, Daryl, and like I said, Dick, we couldn't have a meeting, but I guess my comment is, if you look at the drawing along Clark's Lake, there are a lot of lots that are 50-foot wide. I mean, if you're right on the water, there are some that are 100.
And that's 14 by 68.
And I think that he is working well with the setbacks because he's...
Yeah. I would agree, there's a lot of exceptionally large homes that are, I would say...
On small lots.
On very small lots there. In fact, some of them, I can't imagine the setback being more than five feet at the most. I, you know, and for that reason, you know, I would see... I would have no objection to this variance based on the present situation that exists there. And maybe as a plus, upgrading the septic system would be a plus, at least we'd have a concrete on the tank.
All right. Chuck, you got anything, or Dan?
I feel, though, this is the county planning department's problem. They allowed this 50-foot lot to be developed and sold again. You know, it's... I don't know how that happened. I don't know how that would have ever happened. And that is strange from the doings I've had with them. But...
When was that, '83 when you purchased it?
All the new construction is going to be within the buildable portion of this lot.
Right.
As laid out on this map, even though they're saying this lot is not buildable, but...
Well, that's the thing. I mean, they go back and forth. I mean, they give you a buildable place where you can build, but then they say, "Well, it's 50 feet wide, so you can't build." I mean, they're contradicting themselves right now.
I would like to see the cottage moved back to 40-foot high-water mark, but...
I don't think that's going to happen.
Depending on the neighborhood, too. Anybody else's cottage is in there, they can take a average of the two neighbors and, you know, for a new construction, so...
Right.
I'd say go with it. Majority of lots in the neighborhood are only 50 feet wide, and those people will be doing building and remodeling also, so...
I think the setbacks were five feet back.
10 feet on the sites they've got here.
It's got 10 feet on the site.
No, but back when the lots were created, because my grandparents were in that same situation, they could build, so... But anyway.
They were talking to each other.
So I take it there's no feedback from any neighbors, positive or negative?
I just talked to Eugene Aylers, who's on our north, and I talked to the Carries, who are on our south, and they didn't have any...
So we have no feedback from them?
I actually called, you know, because I talked to the county, and they said, you know, "Are you able to buy any properties?" So I talked to Eugene, and they said, "Well, that makes our lot too small, so I guess we can't do that." So I'm not of a great interest in doing that.
So John, what's your pleasure?
I would make a motion to recommend to the plan commission to grant the variance.
A second, though. Okay, we have a motion from John, a second from Chuck to support the request for a variance. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead. I'm sorry, Linda?
No, go ahead and finish your vote.
We did.
Okay. So motion carried unanimously?
Motion carried unanimously.
If you notice the cover letter from Susan Van den Langenberg?
Yes.
The second paragraph shows and closes a town recommendation form. Could I please have some direction on completing this form? For instance, obviously, it's simple that the town recommends support for a variance, but they also have the reasons. So I'm thinking goes well with the neighborhood, or... And then also, the second question is, is the proposal consistent with the town comprehensive plan? I believe we do support residential in that area.
We're trying to get everybody's lot down to 50 feet.
Okay. And then any concerns or objections? Apparently, there are none.
John, can you help her with that, or you want to just take it right now?
There are no concerns or objections. I mean, I guess, you know, up in the proposal, it does fit with the comprehensive plan because most of the lots in that area are 50-foot wide. There's, you know, and it was a lot. It does have a buildable portion on it, and now they got to go for a variance because it's only 50 feet wide. Sometimes I wonder, but...
Do you need any more detail, Linda? Are you okay with that?
Okay. So the reason for the town's decision, the neighborhood supports the recommendation?
It fits within the surrounding lots.
It's within the surrounding lots. Okay.
No, I heard the neighborhood interests. But if you just use the password B.
Yeah. I know there are... The last five years, there have been three other variances of the 50-foot lots.
Well, there's...
There are other people...
In that area.
Yeah. Probably in place of the limitations.
Yeah.
Five, six lots, and then three variances.
That's right. And that...
I would put in there, too, that the planning department allowed this lot to be created back in 1968.
83. 83.
83.
83.
You want me to include that?
Yeah. I mean, it's not his fault that they decided to let it go through, and I find it out 30 years later.
Thank you.
Okay. And as far as concerns, objections, the town may wish we don't have any in the neighbors? There's no issue with the neighbors, at least none that have been voiced?
No.
And they'll have a chance to appear at the hearing on January 17th?
They get notified.
27, I think it is.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for coming. Good luck with your variance. Because they don't always listen to us, you should know.
No.
RPC ready.
More than I'd like to admit. Okay, going back into pending business. Next item on the agenda is the 2015 meeting schedule. I think you have a copy of that. We ended up with a conflict... Well, I shouldn't say conflict, but we ended up with some mixed dates on the annual meeting held in April. And so I think the thing that we should probably do or put under consideration would be to have the annual meeting and our board meeting on the same night, but arrange the times so that we can cover both. So what we'd do is have the meeting start at, say, 6 o'clock for our annual meeting, followed by the normal town meeting, similar to what we do when we do the annual budget hearing. If it runs a little bit over, fine. If not, I don't think it creates a problem.
27?
Correct. So anybody have any objections or concerns with that? Okay.
The only thing that I have comment on is I really like that we put a date on these, because like last year was very confusing on which one was right. They were all drafts, so now that we put a date on, we can throw...
27.
That can change.
This one you control out. You will get a revised one with the date of at least the 20th.
Okay.
Okay?
So...
So we're squared away, Linda, from hearing?
I think that's a very good thing to put a date in the corner. Thank you.
So we'll plan on having the annual meeting beginning at 6:00 PM. I looked at last year's, and we ran an hour and 20 minutes, so...
And I think that doesn't create a problem, because we've done the same thing with the budget hearing, and it's worked out all right.
We could post our town meeting at 7:30, too.
Yeah.
Or immediately following.
Immediately following. Okay. Let's go with that, then.
Okay. I'll bring back another draft.
Good news.
Or maybe a final. Maybe I'll bring back a final.
The date on it. All right.
February.
February meetings move to 27th.
Well, that's moved to 27th, too.
No, the 27th?
Isn't that the 27th?
No, the 28th.
23rd. My apologies.
I was going to say you moved to April.
You've got to make up your mind.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to get another one of these with a date on it.
We're going to have it on a Friday night.
The DBA still stands for the month of March, if you want to know.
Okay. One right off.
April 23rd.
No, April 21st.
21st.
The reason I had the note on there with the question mark, move to the 27th in the event you did not want to hold an annual and a board meeting on the same night. So April 21st is a Tuesday, not a Monday. I will add the weekdays to the final product.
So we need...
February 23rd.
23rd.
So I will add the weekdays.
And that's a Monday.
Make it a little clearer.
I guess... Next item is the Brigham property on East Townline Road. I think you can see in your packet Leo's response to that issue, which of course, there's no driveway permit on file, and it was blocking the flow of water through the property there, so it was removed last fall. To my knowledge, I don't think we've heard anything back from their attorney at all, have we, Linda?
No, no response, and he did receive a copy of this agenda's.
Okay. So that's more or less an informational item for you.
Very good letter.
The next item is the cable program director and videographer's agreement with Laddie Chapman. And Dick, I'll let you run with that for a few minutes.
The cable advisory committee met last week and basically looked at, there was a request, request by our videographer to move the capital, the equipment balance from 2014 into the 2015 budget. The committee discussed it and thought it would be fair and equitable to the unspent balance from 2014 to be moved into the 2015 budget, giving that 2015 capital on the sheet that I handed out. All right. Sorry. On your line 15. Moving the, moving that to 7690 to reflect the purchase of a new camera. Reason being why it was delayed was to get a better price for that camera in 2015, which we did. Camera, camera and necessary equipment for it to cost $2,606 or 26, approximately $2,600. Also in that capital-outlay budget, which was proposed, new PC for video editing for an estimate of $2,000, which still will leave a balance in the 215 budget. The committee would request that the movement of that money from the 2014 budget into the 2015 budget for these two purchases.
So did you address any of the concerns with the contract?
That's next.
Okay.
One, one out of the pile, though.
I got a couple, I guess I got more than a couple of questions. And the, and I probably have the cart before the horse here with the contract agreement, but, but the intention of this, when we set this entire process up, was to have Laddie operate as an independent contractor. And as an independent contractor, typically what happens with independent contractors, they supply the equipment. Now, I understand that when we started this out, and I don't even recall what year it all came about, there was a startup cost associated, and we weren't paying Laddie to, to any extent. And so I think what we did, or I guess what my take on it would be, is we kind of front-ended his equipment to get him started. But since we're well into this thing, I think the equipment should come as, as an expense from him as a contractor, and he can bill us back for the usage of his equipment and things. And for us to continue to supply equipment kind of contradicts the independent contractor.
Correct.
And then when we talk, I mean, because we do do a lot of things, and don't get me wrong, I think what Laddie does is great, but I think we've...
That aspect of the contract. We also discussed that at our, at our committee meeting. The option that I suggested at the committee meeting was to make Laddie a Thomas Massey employee. I mean, we've already invested considerable money in all the equipment already. Basically, everything that is housed here is Thomas Massey property. Basically, everything that is used by the videographer is Thomas Massey property already. It would be my suggestion that we create a Thomas Massey employee position as videographer to reflect the, well, the actual practice that we have providing the capital equipment for maintaining the channel. It might be somewhat difficult to have an independent contractor come in with all the...
More per year.
More per year. And basically, the social security and Medicare payments. Now, that's, that's not any other overhead, um...
But then he's a town employee, and he works for the county. He said he worked for Sister Bay, too. Whose equipment is he going to use up there?
Well, that would, that would be an independent effort on his part.
See, I think...
It would be our, it would be our equipment.
Well, I think that, I guess, you know, when this all started, going back, I don't know how many years, what was the fellow's name in Sturgeon Bay? His name escapes me.
Tom Soick.
Tom Soick, thank you. Was a contractor for the city of Sturgeon Bay. And they currently have a contractor that does their video work. I, I don't know the advantage to having him as an employee. I can't tell you I know the advantage as a contractor, but in, to my way of thinking, we, yes, we have made the investments for all of this stuff initially, and I understand from a startup perspective, there wasn't, we didn't have deep pockets to, to go and make those investments, and so we did. But I think if it's going to stay as a contractor, then he should be making the investments for the camera or some, or other pieces of equipment that support the application outside of what's in this office.
Of course, we do, we do bill, I mean, I mean, as an employee, would bill anybody? I mean, we have, well, I don't know what we bring in for...
Well, last year, we paid 14, we paid $14,000 out for the videographer contract and for the station operation, and...
What do we bring in?
But we don't, we don't charge some people, and we charge others, and if we had him as employee, I think you'd get into a whole nother issue in that he's recording things then, which, which would be outside what you would call a typical role of an employee, i.e. taping Sister Bay, town meeting, or some of those different items.
Dan, we charge Sister Bay, they pay the town.
I agree. I understand they do, but I'm just saying, if you were a town employee, would we want a town employee going up to tape Sister Bay events?
Why not? They pay for it.
Well, it's a contractor...
We could certainly make that decision as an employee. I mean, we could, we could decide, I, you know, right now, to, to ask Laddie as an independent contractor to provide all the equipment...
I don't, I'm not suggesting that we have him do that, Dick. I'm simply, I'm suggesting that the next pieces of equipment that are acquired come out as a contractor, if he's a contractor, should be acquired by him as a contractor.
The equipment that goes through his house should be acquired by him.
Then we have, we really have a mixed bag.
We, we do, but I understand that. I mean, I give, I believe that we did that because nobody had the cash in their pocket in Laddie, and I understand that, so, but...
Excuse me, Dan.
Go ahead.
The town pays me nothing for the equipment out of my house.
Right, I understand that.
The town doesn't pay me anything at all, it's all my equipment going out.
Right.
I'd be glad to continue along with the line, but I've got to buy a new camera, or you've got to buy a new camera. I'm sorry. Well, the camera's a situation different. That's for here.
Right.
The computer is something I'm going to buy or going to buy for me either way, because I'm, everything I've got is obsolete.
And where does the...
I don't pay enough as a contractor to support buying all I have.
Where does the PC end up, Laddie?
If I'm using it, it's going to have to be at my home, that's where I do my work. That kind of work.
Okay.
That's where it is, that's where my computer is right now at home, and the, the town pays me nothing for that work.
Okay.
I mean, so we kind of have a hybrid, right, I mean, it's kind of a hybrid model. I don't know how, how it would be viewed by, by, well, I don't know, who, internal revenue, or who actually monitors. I mean, it's really a stretch to be an independent contractor. I mean, we, we have the server in the back room.
Speaking of that back room, how come you have a camera in that window back there?
John, let's at least stay focused on this portion first.
Mr. Chairman?
But I'm not here.
Linda?
We have an expert in our audience, Nick Weldon, who is with Rural Insurance, who could probably give us some standards about independent contractors versus employee status.
Put him on the spot.
If he so cared to do that.
You're starting a new position today.
If you care not to, that's a fine deal.
As the conversation was turning out like this, it's actually more likely you're going to get back to me.
Right.
But with an independent contractor versus an actual town employee, currently now, as an independent, he should be covering his own insurance, while I, Laddie's planning as a certificate of insurance, making sure that he is a true independent contractor. That way, when you guys do your workers' comp audit, he passes the nine-point test, which is just nine questions to certify he's an independent contractor, and I mean, he's not covered under workers' comp. If you bring him on as a town employee, and then anytime he's doing town business, he gets injured, that's going to be your guys' responsibility. But if he's an independent contractor, he's here, it, you guys may feel bad, but it wouldn't be your guys' responsibility if he slipped on the ice or did something on his own. But being a town employee, somebody gets hurt on town, town business, they're covered under the workers' comp. Also with him being a town employee, you guys would have to figure out something with him recording in Sister Bay, because if he is recording in Sister Bay, is he doing independent contracting for them, using your equipment? He's got rented from you, or however you guys decide to do that? Or is he, as a town employee, going up to Sister Bay, recording for Sister Bay, and then them billing you back? Because if he's on the clock as a town employee, he needs to be covered by his in Sister Bay doing work.
Workers' comp.
For the workers' comp. So if something were to happen, car accident, like if I'm driving around in the country and just stopping at farms and cold calling, doing work for Rural, I'm covered under those work, their worker comp, no matter whether it's leading me to something, but if I'm on my way to do business, I'm covered. On the other hand, being a subcontractor, I would have to carry my own workers' comp. If I slipped and fell, I'd have to be responsible for myself, so...
Just, just based on, I know you probably, you don't have your, your book here, but based on annual salary of, what, $7,000, would $50 be reasonable as far as workers' comp coverage for that?
Adding it to your policy?
Because we have EMTs on...
First responders, but the county pays us.
Clerical first responders.
It might be under clerical, which is like four cents per thousand, so adding to your policy would be fairly cost-effective. It wouldn't cover much.
All right.
Or I mean, it wouldn't cost much, it would cover him doing town business, but if, you know, cost-wise, it should be. I'm trying to pull up the commissioner's website right now, but clerical more likely would be kind of what it kind of got locked into.
That's what it bases the estimate on.
We won't make a decision whether Laddie should be one or the other officially, while, you know, with the, with the real chairman going. I'm not going to, I'm not going to make that call for Leo.
Well, that would have to come up in front of a budget hearing, too, I would think.
Well, that's the kind of thing that'll get further discussion, but I, I think the, and maybe you might want to chat with the city of Sturgeon Bay on the arrangements they have with their contractor, and enlighten us a little bit further in terms of what's going on. I, my personal take is the camera, if he's a contractor, he should purchase the, the new piece of camera equipment that he's going to use at his expense. I could probably be convinced to go one way or the other with the PC. That's a little different situation, but the camera is the principal item that he uses to be a videographer. And we bite the bullet on the existing cameras, because as Laddie has shared with us in the past, they're, they're to the point where we could probably make him a hell of an offer on multiple cameras, but we wouldn't necessarily have to. But, and the equipment that's in residence here is our equipment, just like it is at the city of Sturgeon Bay. They have servers and other pieces of equipment that are there. They, that belongs to the city, but they have a contractor that operates it. So I guess my piece is if he's a contractor, the camera equipment should be purchased, I think, by Laddie, and, you know, however arrangements we work out, but he owns that piece of equipment. The PC, I could go either way with, and as far as employer-contractor conversation, I think that, that would get delayed at least until the return of...
Well, you know, I mean, it, it does come down to kind of a hybrid model, and I don't know how that fits in, in any whatever category, but to have the town own part of the equipment, and the videographer own part of the equipment, and it kind of buddies the water, I mean...
But you've only, you're down to, realistically, you're down to two or three items that, that enable him to be a videographer. He's got two cameras existing, right, Laddie?
Well, there's a backup section for it.
Okay, so, I mean, it's really the camera that enables him. The editing, the stations, the equipment, the servers, and all the rest of that stuff belong to the, to the town and should remain as the town. I wouldn't expect that any contractor would come in and try and supply all that stuff. He's here as an operator, and he's a videographer, so he would need a camera in order to do that. I mean, his, things would be a camera, tripod, and a microphone, and would enable you to at least be a videographer.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I mean, that's just, that's, I mean, would you disagree with that, Laddie?
Yes, because you mentioned the, the equipment, like the, the computer, that this is going to go on and get edited tonight, minimal edit, admittedly, sure.
Right.
It has to go on through a computer to get it on to the server. Town doesn't pay me a penny for that.
Yeah, I'm not...
It takes a couple more hours.
Yeah. Contract is actually due for renewal. I mean, the two...
But your payments for all these things, I, I thought I might buy any equipment, but it's going to be double what I'd get paid now.
Yeah, so I mean, we, for opening this up for, I mean, if we want to represent as more of a true independent contractor, then my guess is Laddie wants to negotiate a new contract if we're requiring him to buy the equipment, which, as far as the budget goes, I mean, we certainly could eliminate that line item in our budget, but I think it's going to be reflected in videographers' new negotiating contracts. And as far as recording whatever programs, you know, that, that the public access channel has a lot of airtime, and I can sympathize with, with Laddie's position filling up. If we're going to have people actually watching the public access channel, they probably would like to watch, you know, something more than just a test pattern. So that means more programs, I mean, the amount of programming that's put on this public access channel means probably a better audience, you know?
I don't have any to scream with any of that. I think what we're stuck here, and it's not going to get resolved tonight, is whether we have a contractor or an employee. If it's a contractor, then it needs to be redefined as to what you do if, if it ended up being an... If it's a contractor, then it needs to be redefined as to what you do, if, if it ended up being an employee, then you'd have to relook at the things he videotapes and figure out an arrangement to do it. And, and as I indicated, I, I don't think that's a, a call that we'll get into until Leo returns and we're able to delve into it to the next level. But I think those are a couple of the questions that, you know, have to be worked through.
Well, the original question was, is the acceptance of, of moving the capital budget from 2014 into 2015?
I would like to have the chair bring this back to what is agendaed on the agenda. We are talking about the cable program directors and videographers agreement, had nothing to do with the budget. Moving funds and buying equipment was not included on this agenda, and if you wish to bring that up, you should agenda it for next month and with some numbers in front of us, so we have something to look at and go from that point.
We'll keep your, keep your sheet for tonight, because it'll be the same in February. This came out of the committee, this came out of the committee meeting. If you wish not to act on it tonight, I would accept that.
There's no way we could act on it tonight. It's not on the agenda.
Okay, then we can put it on next, next month's agenda, if you, if that would be the wish of the rest of the group.
Yep. I, I think so, maybe in the meantime, we can try and redefine, or be prepared at some point to redefine whether employee, contractor, et cetera, et cetera, were to go with that.
You want, you want me for a February meeting to bring you a, a tentative employee contract based on the videographer contract?
I think that that conversation's going to have to wait till Leo returns, because I think he'll want-
Leo returns when?
He'll be back for the April meeting. So.
We, we, one problem we have is that we don't have a contract with Laddie right now.
Well, I thought-
I was going to say, I thought we actually did that the last one.
We extended it for one month till he had a meeting, and you were supposed to clear up a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Like the two hours, what you said to find the two hours. You know, the board is talking right now, sir.
Okay, let's, um, let's just do an extension for 60 days on this existing contract until we can schedule this for further meeting.
Because I mean, my, my question was, you know-
I know, you talked about time, then-
What happens after the two hours, and nobody could give me an answer.
Right.
Well, the $50 system.
Or anything, I mean, is Laddie, is Laddie just-
He's paying hours, he's, he's paid flat fee for the air session.
Okay, then the assistant is, gets $50 for two hours, and what, if they want another two hours?
And the assistant is, is paid on, on the basis of that $50 per session as well.
For two hours.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's basically what it says, it says, flat fee is $75 for event session, and also says the assistant shall be paid $50 per session.
So is it, so is it 100, if it's three hours, is it $150 and then $100?
It just says a single session is defined as being no longer than two hours, so-
Correct.
The session will last two hours.
So what if it lasts three hours?
It says a single session is defined as longer, no longer than two hours.
So, right in, right in the middle of him interviewing at the pig wrestling, he's going to say, wait, my two hours is up?
That's what the contract says.
Yeah, I know, that's what I had a problem with, I wanted to know what-
And sundry items under this category.
Okay, correct.
Does that seem, uh-
It, it doesn't, you, in doing that, you're delaying any purchases of equipment.
Correct. And I think that-
Till for how many days?
Chuck, your, it's his motion, till when, Chuck?
Ninety days.
Ninety days? Okay. So you want to put that in a formal motion, Chuck, for Linda's benefit?
Oh, oh.
It just extend the videographer, existing videographer's agreement for a period of 90 days from today.
It's not really existing anymore, but the previous videographer-
Sorry.
But that doesn't still then address the, any capital purchases on the budget. Because we do have a budget, line item.
Yeah, but we can't do anything about that tonight, because it wasn't on the budget.
No, but we have an existing, let's see what's on the existing budget right now. The existing budget for 2015, line item 15 is 30, I already added another one to it. What did I have on that sheet? 3,000?
Yeah.
So, are we delaying that?
I, I, I would delay it, because I think by making the decision to purchase a camera and a PC, we, we lock ourselves into the hybrid, the continuation of the hybrid for an indefinite period, and I think we should resolve that directionally at some point in time.
You need to know the employee status before you can start purchasing more equipment.
So, I think we could bring that topic back.
I'm moved that we extend the videographer's agreement until April 21st meeting, with the approval of Mr. Chapman, at which time, or by that time, the cable committee should have met and come up with the numbers necessary and the agreements.
Can I ask a question now?
All right, I got a motion by Chuck, is there a second?
Second.
Second by John, all right, a question?
That doesn't happen.
Well, the question is, the committee has already, what I'm presenting to you today is the results of the committee meeting.
And you, well, then you didn't do what we asked.
We need more numbers.
Over the contract.
What numbers do you, what numbers?
If you're going to present the fact that Laddie should be an employee.
Okay.
We need to know the rate of pay, the cost of benefits, all the insurance, everything that goes with this.
Okay.
Put it together so then I can present it to us on a form, so we can, I can do this, see what it is.
That's, that's why I presented it to you.
And contrast that with the, well, let, let's settle the, the issue at hand, which is the motion by Chuck, seconded by John, to extend until April 21st meeting, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. I think, to Chuck's point, you're going to have to do some homework relative to this conversation, as to contractor and employee, and I think it needs to be laid out from both facets, what's the advantage to having him as a contractor, what's the advantage to having it as an employee? And in specific, you have to get inside the things that he videotapes, and what the impact of making him one or the other has to those particular roles, because it, it could get pretty muddy, I mean, as I understand things-
There already is muddy.
I know it's muddy, but I mean, this is, this is, it's got to be clarified, and, and to spend any more money or to put a stake in the ground at this point without knowing that, I think we're making mistakes, so.
So.
Let's leave it at that for-
Are you asking then Laddie to present a contract to the town based on him purchasing equipment too?
I would say if it's Laddie's wish to become an employee of the town, then he should put together his contract as such. And if not, his contract to the, to the alternative.
Okay, as an independent contractor.
I mean, if he's an employee, and we're furnishing all the equipment and, and everything, insurance and all, there would be a difference than if, if it was a independent contractor and he has to furnish all the equipment.
All right, so, as of April 21st, this contract's been, the independent contract has been extended till April 21st.
Everything's status quo.
All right.
No, his independent contractors thing has been extended till the end of the year.
Videographer's agreement.
Videographer's agreement was to the end of the year, of 2015.
Okay, it lets-
How are we going to renegotiate that?
We need to look at this from both sides.
Okay.
You can't, you can't come at it with the only, the old Ben Franklin balance sheet of all the benefits of an employee, we have to look at both sides. What's the advantage as a contractor, what's the advantage as an employee, and then, when you take those two and lay them out on a piece of paper, then you're going to have to tell us obviously the cost, but you're also going to have to address the issue of what does he videotape-
Right.
And goes on, and goes on our channel, and how, and where is there going to be a, a potential for conflict or opportunity? So, you, you need to lay out both sides of that question, and then, we'll have the, the information to peel back the onion, so to speak, and get inside of it.
So we actually have two agreements with Laddie, one is the independent contractor agreement, and the other is the videographer's agreement. Okay, and you want to keep those separate, or do you want to incorporate those together?
Well, it kind of goes back to-
I mean, they are separate, they have to stay separate, but-
So if you want, but only until we get to a decision.
Changing the class of employment, that would change the contract.
So if you want me to come back with the pros and cons of an independent contractor versus an employee?
Right.
I have to know, you were the one that brought him up that he wanted to be an employee, so this should be the point.
You're on the right path there, you just got to cover both sides of the street.
Well, I mean, I don't want to bring something and then have it, you know, be a drug contradiction to what the board wants.
If he's an employee, a videographer's contract and all the rest of that stuff is almost immaterial, you'd have to lay out as an employee what his duties and responsibilities are. If he's a contractor, then you have to lay out those.
Okay, so I mean, it's going to be up to Laddie then to present-
Help you define that, I guess.
A new independent contractor agreement, because I'm not going to develop an independent contractor agreement for him, since he's going to be the independent contractor presenting it to the board.
Right.
We don't, if, if this is kind of a, a backwards approach that we've been using, we present an independent contractor's agreement to the independent contractor.
But it was something that Tom Gurne, your predecessor, and Laddie worked through, this was not an independent effort on either one of their behalfs, and we understood that, but, and, and I don't expect that it would be even now, I would expect you'd have some input into it, because you wouldn't want Laddie coming in here with something that, that you know from day one wouldn't fly anywhere, so you're going to have to have that interchange, and he's going to have to take the lead on, on it, but you're going to want to be part of that conversation.
So he's going to, he's going to present the independent contractor agreement?
The independent contractors agreement is signed, sealed, delivered, but I guess you have to present, if, if he wants to be a town employee, he has to present. Plus, where's it going to come out of the budget? We've already budgeted for-
You froze, you froze our budget.
There you go.
Let's not confuse his task any greater.
You froze our budget.
We put a temporary hold on it. All right, let's move on, if you have some questions on it, feel free to call, I'll be happy to help.
Hopefully.
All right. New business, discussion and action, well, we actually have the word action here too, so we have a town hall rental fee. I have to find my own agreement, Chair Arena, and the Wasps. Okay, let me explain briefly, the town hall rental comparison costs, which Linda prepared for us, did a nice job. We've had a couple issues in the past with some of the renters, so we were trying to update and understand whether or not we were charging the correct amount, given sometimes the amount of cleaning effort that had to take place and/or other things after a renter had used the property. So I'd asked Linda if she'd go out and kind of get an assessment as to where we stood, as you can see here from this document, it's, we're right in the, we're right in the mix. We're not too high, we're not too low, you know, it doesn't look like we should make any changes, we have some issues with some renters, and I think some of the other communities have over the past as well. The one thing that we didn't put on here, but one thing that I think we should chat about a little bit, is we've had some issues with security. We get charged by the sheriff when they come out, if the alarm system goes off. And I think if we have that kind of situation happen after we've given someone the key fob and instructions, and if we get charged, we may want to consider retaining the security deposit to offset the charge for the sheriff's visit.
How much do you charge us?
Charge for the sheriff's visit?
50 or 100 bucks, depending on how many there were, and I think the first one is 50, and then it goes to 100, is that right, Linda?
I don't recall us getting any bills within the last few years, we've been pretty lucky.
We've been pretty lucky, because we called them and done everything else under the sun, but, anyway, that was one consideration, but the other thing is, here's where we stand. If you take a look at the second page, why we looked at it a little bit, under rental income and town hall costs, the rental increase year over year was $330, but the cleaning costs were up seven and a half, so we just wanted to make sure that we weren't losing any more, we're not really going to ever make money, it's not our intention, but we wanted to make sure we weren't costing more than we should.
I think one thing we should maybe do, do, do to what has happened in the, just not just the distant future here, some of the damage that it was caused and security problems that, that did happen. It might not be a bad idea to raise the security deposit, and then retain that security deposit until the place is actually checked out and cleaned up. And if the cleaning costs go over normal, they would be deducted from those charges, or that, or that fee. I think we, we have a broken fire alarm that wasn't noticed till, right after the fact, and now the, the thing comes out that we're going to spend several hundred dollars to have this thing repaired, and, you know, if the security deposit is already been given back, you're going to have a tough time trying to collect it, so. If we would retain that security deposit until everything has checked out, and then go from that point.
Who does the actual checking?
That's right. We have, we have a group that comes in and cleans, and they do their normal cleaning, if, if they complained that the place was a mess and it took extra work, you know, we, we pay for it, so.
Can I ask a question? I know I weigh the bar, but Linda, do you check after each person, each group leaves? Is that how, Linda, yeah? Is that, is that how it works?
Yes, Linda, go ahead.
Yes, for instance, we had it rented on Christmas Eve, I came up on Christmas morning and took a peek through. It was not quite up to, it needed some additional work, so in that case, we did retain a portion of the security deposit to cover some of our cleaning costs. Yes, there was an instance with the alarm, our chairman, vice chairman's aware of that as well. I ordered the part, I replaced it, I'm waiting for an invoice, I do certainly intend to turn that invoice over to the rental party. There have only been two, maybe three occasions where I felt it necessary to retain a portion or all of the security deposit.
So if you, if you think it's okay, then it doesn't, you don't call the people and clean, so they, there would be no additional cleaning?
No, the-
No, they, these people come in and clean on a regular basis, they clean the town hall, but if there was a party the night before and the place is extra dirty, we pay extra to have them clean it up, because they, it takes them longer to do it. So we have what we might want to say is our normal monthly cleaning maintenance bill.
I mean, they go through and do an exceptional job, I mean, they, they do things like literally cleaning the chairs, the undersides of the chairs where they assorted frosting and bubble gum, and other wonderful things happen, so I mean, they really go above and beyond, but there have been instances where we've had issues with the overall cleanliness, not to that degree, but in terms of what's up. And, you know, maybe the easy way to do that is, and I don't know if anybody's questioned you or not, Linda, on the security deposit, but we either change the amount or we can change the verbiage to reflect things such as the security system, if there's a fault, we could retain portion of that if they're, if we're billed by the sheriff. Something along those lines.
Right, and that, that could certainly be a sentence or two that we could add, if there are any additional, if there's any additional damage or, or parts need replacing after the fact, you will be billed for that, and you will be responsible.
Yeah. But the thing is, is if somebody doesn't check it right away, how are you going to say, well, that party broke it? I mean, if there's other people in here.
That's, right.
Say we have a meeting or something, what did you break? Nothing yet, and I know you know of-
We, we have that covered, because if we have back-to-back rentals, like a Saturday and a Sunday, like for instance, on Christmas Eve, we did have it rented on Christmas Day as well, so if we have back-to-back, either I or Donna or Judy Maas, who are cleaning people, and like our chairman said, they do an ex- like our chairman said, they do an exceptional job, they're very conscientious of everything, they will know if something is askew. So we do check between rentals to make sure that the responsible party gets the bill, and not someone else.
Okay. I mean, we've got a great facility, and we just wanna try and keep it that way without incurring additional costs, so maybe we can just, Linda and I can work on, maybe just tweaking the security piece. But if somebody asks you, you've got a table that's relevant in terms of what we charge, so if you have somebody that says, "You guys are too high, or too low," or whatever, you have a document to refer to for that purpose as well.
So you're gonna keep the security deposit as it is?
Unless you guys think we should change it, I'd-
No, I don't, no, I don't think there's any need to-
I think we just change the verbiage on-
...burden on those people who, you know, do a good job, you know, so.
That's the trouble with anything, though, is you have the people that abide by the rules, and pay the fees, and take care of the place, and clean it, and then you get one group that comes in and spoils it, so.
Okay.
But sadly, with everything.
Next item of business is Door County Child Care Services discontinuance of operation. This is almost more of an FYI. The agreement with this organization was if, if and when they decided to go out of business, which is what they're doing, there's a right of first refusal to purchase the property, and we're thinking it'd be a great spot for a videographer's lab for $38,000 plus. Forget it. Any rate, I don't think anyone here is going to be exercising the right to purchase the old school building.
So how did we get first options to buy this place?
You know, Door County-
It's the county of town.
Has the rights to it, and the county asked whether or not the town was interested.
Okay.
Because it is in our town, so if the town would be interested, the county would purchase it and sell it back to us for $38,000.
Well, why don't they buy it for $38,000? We'll buy it for a dollar.
Sounds like a good idea. Okay, we certainly processed that one. All right. Next one's, you're from, kind of an informational thing again, it's, this one's a little confusing, but it talks about the DOT hosting a meeting to discuss local event detours and future improvement expectations, and it's got to do with signage and the manning of detours for local events. So there's a meeting that's gonna be held in Egg Harbor on January 20th at 10:00 a.m., and I think for our benefit, if we did another Sesquicentennial, we might be interested, but more than likely, it's gonna be a ways off, so I would say it might be the Turkey Trot.
Turkey Trot, yeah.
If anything, I think that would be the only one that, I think that we close the streets for, right?
School, yeah, the school.
It's a school, yeah, so if there's-
Christmas parade, the-
Yeah, so if there's something here, actually, the school might attend that and let us know. So, okay. Door Kiwanee County Legislative Days. As a reminder, last year, we budgeted $1,000 towards supporting this activity, which is where we go to the, go to Madison as a group with a common set of issues. The $1,000 donation that we make to this group also entitles us to have two people that can go to the event. Linda went last year, was one of those people. And they're asking here that if we have any common issues to identify them, I don't know that off the top of my head, I don't know if we have any as a town, that we might like to submit, but we can do that and turn that document in, so if anybody has any thoughts with respect to that, we can either capture them now, bring it back, or you can share those thoughts with Linda, and we can recap them back to Rob Burke. Anybody have any enlightening idea, or thoughts, opinions?
Yeah, yeah. So we've already committed $1,000?
Yes, and we've done this over the last, I don't know how many years that we've done it.
Biannual, so we have, we did budget $1,000 for 2015. Actually, the check was in the voucher approval tonight.
I think one of the things, and I'm not positive of this, but it wasn't one of the things that we got support on, was the water, the beach monitoring was one of the activities.
Beach monitoring, the dredging, when I went to Madison two years ago, the dredging, what the water level was, if a heavy topic. It's a very interesting process, you get to meet many of the legislators, and tour the Capitol, and-
And if you're thinking of running for office, you might be able to go on one of these events and learn more. Tony?
I think that's a great idea.
All right, okay. Comprehensive Plan Annual Review. I think we've actually had this before, just as a topic. John, were you gonna eventually put this with your committee, when you can have a forum?
Well, yeah, there's, in certain parts of the Comprehensive Plan, there's stuff that we have to do, we should do, or whatever, so when we get the, a committee together, we're gonna have to look to see if we're behind a little bit, or ahead, or something. I know there was some things that we looked at that needed updating, so.
So this is, you have a shortage of people to, right now?
FYI, correct.
So, this is probably gonna be brought back, like, in the April-May timeframe?
Yeah, I would say, because Stan or Mike is going to be back on April 1st, so after April, and Victoria-
Linda, why don't we just make a note, and we'll pick this up in, like, May? Bring it back in May?
When is Victoria gonna come back again?
I think after April.
After April?
Or maybe April 1st.
Okay, so, it sounds like sometime in April, we could have a meeting.
Okay, so we'll put it, we'll bring it forward to May, if it works out at that-
Well, it's gonna, there is some of the stuff that takes a while, so you might wanna bump that back.
Okay, well, let's see what happens.
It might take one or two meetings to get something clarified, or-
Okay.
So, put it at June or July.
All righty, we'll do that. We have covered John and Jacqueline Sawyer, so we're good there. Next item of business is the approval of vouchers, claims, and bills. Has everybody had an opportunity to review and sign?
Yes.
Sign those things?
And junior. I move that we approve the vouchers, bills, and claims for December 16, 2014, through January 19 of 2015.
And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion by Chuck, second by Dick, to approve the vouchers, bills, and claims. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carried. Okay. Last item, quickly go through the correspondence, if anybody has a question. We did, I was totally surprised by this, that the Nature Conservancy sent us a gift, gift check, $100 check, in grateful appreciation for providing fire protection for properties in their area, which I thought was a nice position to take. Obviously, they're under no obligation. McCollum Holdings LLC, it's this note, if you don't know, is a mute point. The current owners are vacating the property. Not the current owners, the current lessee is vacating the property, so nothing will be happening with that. Thomas and Heskey Comprehensive, or the county's giving you an update to their comprehensive plan.
What about the liquor license there? Are we just gonna wait for-
Well, they, they have the liquor license until June, huh?
Jeez.
So, we'll get another opportunity, I'm sure, to figure out what to do with that.
Three residential schools.
Our final calculation for general transportation aids, $187,000, paid out quarterly. Look forward to getting that $46,000 bucks. And then our bill for fire protection with the city, and then a footnote here about a gentleman in the back by the name of Nick, who's, we've become very conversant with already. Note on Humane Society, the intake sheet, this is how many dogs, cats, and other animals. Do we have any idea, just out of curiosity, because somebody always asks it, how many dogs are catch or caught? They show nine. Does that seem close to what Mark had, just out of curiosity?
Uh, let's see, you pay Mark $35 when he picks up a dog. That seems-
Pretty close.
Yeah, there's, what's maybe, maybe five or six that he actually charged us for.
Okay, just curious. Other than, other than having an abundance of cats.
Yeah, how can there be 42 stray cats?
Well, you know, it doesn't take much if you go to one residence where they have a problem with cats, and they're, they bring them in. I mean, you see in the paper all the time where these people, you know, have homes with tons of unfortunate animals, and, I mean, they, they take control of them. Tourism tax, collection $8,916 for the month of October, that was kinda nice. Agricultural community engagement farm, lean leadership. I thought this was interesting, the lean leadership in government is something that Walker would like us to do more of, and I thought we're pretty lean already. Doesn't let us increase our budget by anything, that's, how much leaner can you get? I don't know. And that's it. So.
I'd rather like this thing, junior.
Announcements, Wisconsin DOT Detour Informational Meeting, which we talked about on January 29th. Next board supervisors meeting, Monday, February 23rd. And are there any items that we need to put on the agenda for next month, other than what we've already discussed? Hearing none. The last item on the agenda would be a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Oh, second that.
Finally, somebody stepped up to the plate. Motion by Dick, second by John. Would you all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carried, we are adjourned.